To the flag, I like the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we are actually having an assessor's meeting.
Immediately.
Yes.
Everybody got a bag?
Jim brought back.
There you go, there.
So the RFP for the townwide reassessment was given, the draft was given us to a last meeting. So we tabled for this meeting because Jim had to put in other, you know, other facts and figures, which he did, and it was very, very nice. I reviewed it, and I think we should go ahead with it. Did any, I don't know if you guys.
Any questions?
I mean, we, this is pretty much the same as last time, except there are.
Yeah, I put a, I put a paragraph in the pen on the first page that they're going to be at the address conference, May 12th, and they all, they have.
There, that's what we wanted.
Yeah, they're gonna come in and blah, 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 and then.
It was May 12th.
Ask some questions, try to understand what it is we want.
Which is what we asked for, then.
And we got the entries, the data, you know, like how many, how many parcels and how many this and that. I forget what page it's on, but.
Yeah, that's over there. Well, we did double side of the space base, but it would only be on page four without a number pertinent to town data. We filled that in, population, estimated number of building permits, estimated number of qualified sales. So that was the one thing I, we'd asked him to do, and I think it looks fine. So we have a motion to accept the RFP as written.
I will make a motion.
Second. All in favor? You did a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm out real much.
I want to, I want to post this on, on our website.
And then we'll have an advertisement in the paper, right?
Yes, and I've made, I made inquiries, as we discussed, of probably eight different, ten different.
People that you're gonna actually reach out to and say, would you like to bid?
A few, they, some of them returned the call, and that's why that.
That's amazing.
And I, I think we'll probably get two, hopefully we'll get three responses, maybe more, but.
It's always good to get three.
The ones that I wanted to call me back, called me back.
So you know that.
And, and, well, I, I think they have the capability and capacity to deliver.
Are we just gonna do the quod ah times, or do we print out?
There should be, there should be a.
I, I think you put.
A trade paper that, is there not some?
No, I, I think you put it in, you, you put in the, well, I got a guy, Brewer. He's, he, he works at, with Bangor, he's a great assessor. But I think, I would do one in.
Which hires?
Well, when you do the DOT thing, there's a publication they put out, and it's free. There must be an assessor's publication that you can put. There is not?
No, no, there's, there's a name, assessor.
So goes my advertising budget.
What?
It goes my advertising budget, yes.
Well, I think if you put one in, in a, in a paper, like in the Bangor paper.
It's like $400.
Oh, maybe not. Well, no, it pays.
They would pay for us.
If, if you got.
Can we take that out of the money for the RFP?
Whatever, I don't see why not.
Well, you mean, of course, to town, putting money aside, yes, to get the best deal, I think you should be able to pay advertising out of that.
I have the revaluation.
Was it 110,000, and they go to 400, 150, 150, you should take the advertising out of that.
I want to, I, I just want to describe something that's in here that y'all didn't know about. They are going to have to create new records. New records that reflect an automated system. By a new record, I mean property card describes what's on the land, on the earth out there. What parcel of land it is, blah, blah, blah. How that is calculated, the valuation report that goes with that, a sketch of, of the buildings on the land, and their footprint, and, and two pictures of, of the house, code. Now, those records are going to be new records. What they are not going to do, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna go get new file cabinets and set those new file cabinets up and create new separate records. And then we will, as they create the records, we will go to the old record for that map and lot, and we will take out a few select items and put in the new record. But there's no way that we can have them come in here and begin to work in and out of the, the current records. That would be a disaster. So we're gonna have to find a place, or get them to get a place where they can have those file cabinets ready, and when they start creating new records, they bring the data in, it goes into the system, they print out the, and they create a new file for that property. Okay? All brand new. And then we'll take out of the old files.
Like the Ds, the, the history of the Ds and things.
The D, valuation report, a transfer doc, and, and we're gonna minimize what's in it because the new system will have the property card resident as an automated file. We can take and put the old property cards, the blue cards, as we call it, in the new record. But that'll be after the new record is completed. We'll go to the old records and we'll say, well, here's a letter from 1892 that maybe has some historical significance, maybe we'll put that in there, or whatever.
Do you anticipate, because I know when you were talking about shoreline zoning and that various things, that you said that some of these properties have shifted or were not what they said they were on the old maps. Is there going to be some accounting for that?
Well, they'll go out and they'll, like, I'm not quite sure I understand your question.
Well, I recall when we were working from through the planning board, I think it was, reassessing, not reassessing, but looking at the old maps and property maps and where these were. And you said that in walking some of this land, you noticed that it wasn't exactly where it's set.
Oh, yeah, well, that is, that is something that, you know, when they go out and deal, we could tell them, take note of, 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 of the shoreline, because you have accretion and erosion. Shore, shorefrontages changes.
Yeah.
But that's, that's why we don't use the coursing method to assess shorefront feet. We use the tie line method, where we kind of average, you know, if it's a wave, if the shore looks like this, I'll start it here and I'll go, okay, I, I'll draw a straight line through that piece. And then when it turns a corner, I'll draw another arc, called a tie line arc, and just calculate the shorefront feet or estimate it that way.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we'll, we're, there are certain areas where they'll be able to take a look as they go out and look at the land and see the other features of the land. They'll make no doubt that we can, they'll look at it.
As long as, you know, I just take down the road. I don't want there to be just somebody come along and say, oh, there's a discrepancy here, look at this, this.
Well, there's, there's no way to avoid that completely.
Yeah, they're not surveying.
Yeah, we're not surveying.
We're just assessing the value of the land and the building.
Yeah.
We're doing enough. Let's hope they can do it. It'll be great.
Well, there's a, there's a segment in here that says, understand, these assessments are to be, citizens are going to be asked to gain entry. Interior inspections will be performed. And our goal is to accomplish at least 80% interior inspections. There's a, you know, that'd be nice if we could get 80% of the properties inspected inside. Those that don't, they'll be getting a letter that says, sorry, we weren't able to get in to see what you got. But, and we're gonna have to make an estimate, okay, of what you got. And, and it would be prudent probably to come in and make an appointment to let the assessors in to see the inside of the property. There's a, there's a few folks that are never gonna let an assessor in the house, but that's, that's the way the game is played.
Yeah. You did a lot of work there.
All right. Have a good evening.
You too.
And we'll get her down.
I'll make a motion when we close the assessor's meeting.
Second. All in favor? So we're now gonna open the floor board meeting, and we have a motion to sign the warrant.
I'd love to make a motion to sign the warrant. I will second that.
All in favor?
Well, the warrants are going around. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of March 31st, 2021, as written.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Old business sewer.
I'm not sure if you want to do old business right now.
Do you want to do that, and then go ahead and do it?
Well, we're gonna jump to Victor. Victor, you have a renewal of your license.
Yeah.
Anything changed?
It's exactly the same as the.
Same seating, no, I can't be same seating exactly because of COVID, right? But you, you have the potential to have that seating at some point.
Yes, and that may come out.
75% after Memorial Day, right?
I think so.
I think I read something.
70% at least, and hopefully we get everything back.
Are we doing breakfast lunch and dinner?
Uh, right now, we're doing breakfast lunch, but we will be doing breakfast lunch and dinner.
Good. So we're doing new one experience. Okay, uh, public comment? Anyone having any comments on the new license renewal, or the renewal of the license?
We look forward to it.
Yes, looking forward to going out again.
Yes.
So we will entertain a motion?
I will make a motion.
Excellent.
Side marks.
Yes.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Are you thinking?
I guess I'm gonna say, because I'm a boy.
Oh, why are you pulling?
We have to sign it with blue pen.
Yes, I've got the blue pen. All right, I will find this.
Renee, are you gonna do that, the thing to remember?
I'm gonna make copies of it, so can you come up tomorrow?
Sure, sure, I'll pop by maybe around noon.
Yep, that's fine. Oh, Suzette said to make them, sure?
Okay.
Yep. They're signing it still. Okay, so what's, I think it's a little old man.
That's the only page we have to sign, right?
Could I have that?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so while we're doing that sewer rate increase, did you get that paperwork from us? Please, did you give it to us? Okay, so that was the page, that loose page, she ended up. So not to have be in shock all at once, I believe we're trying to raise it a little bit because it's going to be raised when we have the new facility, hopefully not too much. So the suggested raise is what, from 7610 to 8610? To what?
8610.
8610? Of course, all of us pretty much on the sewer, where you're known on the sewer. Yes, you are in town, who I am. Well, we can't all, we refuse ourselves, we wouldn't have any. I, we'd have to make, I'd like it effective in June. Do you don't want to do it for July 1st?
Well, the billing issue.
Oh, okay, whatever. Do we have, who would like to make that ugly motion?
I would move that we, okay, there's sewer abatement.
Do you have a blue pen?
Sewer rate.
Sewer rate increase, sewer rate.
Sewer rate increase.
Sorry, 8610.
8610.
Beginning in June.
Beginning in June.
Do I have a second?
Do I have a second? Oh, I just thought you were, you have a second.
Well, we will say normally, we should say discussion. Is there any public discussion on this particular?
I have a question. Um, did the old debt get paid off? Is that paid off?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
But we've, we've still been putting that 25,000 away for, to pay for our matching funds on the new rates that we're getting for the new facility.
Yeah, actually, David, remember, it was paid off like two years ago?
Well, we've been putting that aside.
Putting the extra aside.
Okay, I, I thought that's what I remembered. I just wanted to be sure.
Anyone else? So not having any other discussion, take a vote, all in favor? Slightly reluctant late, but now, 70. We need to balance the budget. Yeah, I don't even think that's got to follow six. Well, it's not, but it's.
Step in the right direction.
We're getting better.
In the right direction, that means.
Sewer abatement. Oh, we had new business one? Where's the new business? Oh, Apple, I'm sorry. This is John. John Rule. Oh, great.
Okay.
He's setting off his recorder.
I take off my, my Clark kit hat. And I come to you, first off, thank you very much for allowing me to address the board on behalf of Apple, the association to promote and protect the Quebec environment. As you probably all remember, it was founded in 2005 by Rudy Jordan. She ran it for 10 years and then moved to Hawaii. I don't know why she went to Hawaii.
Can't imagine.
But anyway, she went to Hawaii, and the folks that she left it with worked very hard to keep it going, but 2020 was a bad year. It was a bad year for a lot of people. A few of us realized in the latter part of the summer that it was about to fall. And we realized that this was the, the only website that supports the town's businesses. And we didn't want to see that go. So for that reason, primarily, we went back to work and with the, the old board going to the new board in. So it was all done legally. We didn't just get absconded with, with the business. And we've been in the process of putting it back together. The website is live and has been live, and we, and we encourage the board and any member of the community, we're a lot of, we're serious, no, no, that is putting together special events to make sure that we know that because we post them on the Missle Quebec main website, okay? And that's, that's something that's done quite regularly. We have an administrator for many, Captain Betty, she doesn't live around here, but she's very active. And if she finds out the new event. I'm sorry?
She has a summer home.
She has a summer, she has a rental home here. And, yeah, so, so she comes to town and goes back and doesn't tell anybody she was here.
Yeah.
So I've spoken to her many times, I've seen her on Zoom many times.
I've never had a chance to both elbows.
Oh, you haven't?
Very, very nice woman.
Well, I know that.
She's very nice.
I know that. So, anyway, I just wanted to, to make sure that the members of the board understood where we were going because I know you talk to a lot of people. And somebody says, well, what's going on with this group? I want you to retalk over in the background. So as an example of the kind of things that we're doing right now, we have this brochure that is in preparation, it's not, this is a track, but it was printed for you guys in particular.
Excellent.
And this is a, based on a conversation I had with this lady here. This is based on visitors to Quebec who come in on the ferry specifically, okay? Those people come in on foot, they don't have a car, they typically want to see what's on Water Street, and, and they don't get much farther than Water Street. So this is for them. But what you're looking at is only part of what's actually there. You see the little code box on the bottom of the map? If you have the right kind of phone, which I got, you go, you click on that, and you go to the interactive map on our website. And with that, you can scroll all the way to China if you want. And, and you can see businesses that are well outside of the walking range. Anybody that's listed, whether, will come right up and just see that.
Oh, they can put their smartphone in.
Yeah.
Oh, that's so cool.
Now, John, at one time, Ruda and John Stents put together this marvelous map of Quebec.
Right.
And it, and they continued to reproduce it and hand it out so that people could, I mean, I used to pass it out, Quebec landmarks.
That map was dated 2017.
Yeah, well, he would update it, you know, supposedly, but then he got busy with the university and it.
John Stents has not been available to us.
Yeah.
Okay, so what we've done, actually, if you go to a great many other businesses or their websites, they use exactly the same map technology.
Yeah, yeah.
This is done with Google My Maps. And if, if we get a new business that wants to work with us.
Yeah.
We can have them on that map in five minutes.
Yeah.
We don't have to wait until next year.
Yeah.
They won't be obviously on the paper copy, but they'll be on the electronic copy.
That's good.
Okay? So we're, we're printing up a, a sufficient quantity of these so that Carol can hand them out to her daddy. Hopefully, we can have them on the ferry itself and make them available to businesses in town to hand out.
Yes.
So, and, and this is all done by subscriber money. This is not a single penny.
Yeah.
Their money, yeah. Okay, so this is all done privately. And we're hoping that this will help us with future fundraising efforts because we can say, this is the kind of thing we've already done.
Yes.
The next thing that's going to be coming out, and I don't have anything to show you on this, what they call a rack card. You see them in the public places, and it's just a standard size card. And we're gonna have that out, and that will go into not only the local businesses, but also to the, the state tourist bureau offices, okay? So if somebody comes into Calhous and they want to know about Quebec, well, we didn't know much about Quebec, but here, this card. And the card will have the same codes on it, so people can right away see this Quebec name and come right here. And hopefully, that's money.
And see everything we have.
I'm sorry?
And see everything we have right on our phone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's all right there on your phone.
Do businesses pay dues to you, like a chamber?
Yeah, no, we have nothing to do with the chamber.
Right.
Okay?
You're, you're acting like a chamber would add.
Well.
Well, it's not politically affiliated. When people ask for a chamber, I'm gonna point them to Apple.
We're a 501(c)(3).
A little bit different.
Yeah, that's a difference. So, but one thing that we did find out in conversation with some visitors, they, we, we found out that they were familiar with the VLM website. Yeah, oh, that's a great website. We, we come here all the time, this is the Quebec main website. But they didn't know anything at all about Apple. They had no idea that Apple was behind it.
Yes.
So that's why the new logo that Stents produced.
Yes, I love that.
And you're gonna start to see that, that CD made that voice.
It's really great.
And it's actually gonna be done in color when we come out of the plane.
That'll be great.
So.
Good. You did a good job. We talked a few weeks ago. I'm impressed.
We're gonna see more of that logo.
Good.
So, anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
I quit my hat tackle.
Very good. Thank you so much. So now it's your abatement. Just one. Yep, and it's right here, account number 500805, and the, it was a duplicate. Two different, two different months, different quarters? Yes, so two bills. So we, we have a motion to accept this abatement as a duplicate of, of bill.
Second.
I guess I need a motion.
Can you?
And you can, and I can't. That's right. Forgot about that. All, all in favor?
Stop with the motion, the man.
Oh, my goodness. You get all the fun you guys. Waste water treatment plant grant checking account. Do you have to have a separate one? The state barber does? Yep, they've listed necessary documents for it. This is to make a separate checking account. That means they'll have to get the checks of its own.
I'm gonna go. I won't order any until more activities start because the bank can print them out.
Okay.
So is that really for all of us to sign, or just you and me and Suzette?
The board says, sir, please allow Suzette Francis, treasurer of town of Quebec, to open a checking account to town of Quebec titled Waste, WWTP, Waste Water Treatment Plant Upgrade. The signer's own account will be as follows, General Emerson, Dan Wagner, Suzette Francis, and Renee Gray. Only two of the above, but actually, it wouldn't have to be one. One of either, one of you and one of this one, not just you and Suzette. It's not worded that way.
Well, we've never had an extra person on there like that before, so I just used the old form to change the account.
Well, we know that that's one select person and one treasurer, deputy treasurer. And is this different?
I may want to update that form that's like a bunch of.
The town of Quebec, you have, so you don't want me to read this one?
Hey, you can.
Suzette Francis, town of Quebec select board authorized Suzette Francis to transfer $100 to the general fund into the waste water treatment plant upgrade checking account with the purpose of opening it. You do need $100 to open it.
I actually want to make an amendment. We received a grant reimbursement from DEP today of a little over $3,000. Instead of taking from the general fund the $100, I was gonna use that check.
Okay, so why don't we just fix that, to, to deposit? What was it called? From what, the DEP?
DEP grant reimbursement.
Deposit, the DEP grant reimbursement.
Thirty, 3,000, I don't know, it's in a safe, I completely checked them out.
Well, you're, you're putting the whole check in, or just?
That's what I was gonna ask the selectmen, do you want the whole check to be in, or just the $100 to open the checking account and remain to put back into the expense account that's been, um, over spent, because there was no funding.
Makes sense. So you're not gonna deposit the grant?
No, just take that.
And throw that $100 in that grant check. I'll just.
Okay, so I'll script this out.
And reimburse what we already paid.
Your computer's still on?
Yeah, I, I'll make sure it's off, but I decided not to.
So, yeah, we'll just, yeah, yeah. Okay, so we may, would I make this motion?
I, I'm so moved.
But we, uh, what do we?
What she said. I will second what she said.
Cut it out. I know. Rachel's favorite, famous line is, so moved.
So moved, yeah. Right, what she said.
We didn't, we didn't, yeah, we need a second and we got a vote. She's signing it.
I second that.
All in favor? Okay, I'll take it back.
Okay.
And then the other one, which I scribbled on, is she's fixing it, so we're just gonna change where the $100 is coming from. There we go. So while we're doing that, select board meeting, oh, yes, we have a very, unfortunately, ill and very ill Sonia, and we're, our prayers go out to her and her family. But it brought me to the idea that we should really have some kind of policy that if you're not, if you're gonna miss a select board meeting, we really need two weeks' notice because during the summer, months are coming, and if we just decide that we're not coming the day of the meeting, I mean, obviously, extended, extended weeks' notice don't, don't count. But if you know you're gonna miss a meeting, please let Renee know because, but we have to go on this. Because I'd really like a two week notice, you know, like, like right now, if you know you're gonna miss two weeks from now.
I mean, unless it's family, you know.
Well, obviously.
You can't put it, yeah.
Well, you can't.
Say you're going on vacation or.
Well, that's, that's the whole point, but we, we've had really kind of like a laissez faire attitude where, you know, if you don't come, well, they're not here, so we gotta call them, well, whatever. But that's, that really would, we're down one person for a while.
But don't we, with the technology, we could also still.
Zoom in.
Call or zoom in.
I don't think that we're gonna ask.
If circumstances present themselves, you can still call in and, so, it's good. And obviously, a pass notice is best we can do with that.
I never take a vacation.
Jill, how long do you guys continue with this? We're not doing it anymore. And how long do you guys, are gonna continue with it for a while?
Until the state of emergency is over. Absolutely, but I still would just like a, a vote that we can in fact have some sort of a policy that you can please notify Renee at least within a week that you're gonna miss the meeting because she has to find, then she has to run around and find, making sure, oh, do we have a call?
So moved.
We have a week or two. Yes.
Week or two, uh, we have.
Well, I would think, from a vacation standpoint, everybody.
We do it anyway. I mean, we do it anyway, most of us.
Yeah.
We always.
Well, it would be nice if like tonight, if you weren't gonna make the next meeting, you just tell, hey, by the way, I can come next Monday because, or whatever.
Cause he's gonna be sitting on the beach in Hawaii, you have a mind, guys.
Well, I hit the operation. I thought I was gonna be out one week. For that.
My thought.
Right. And, yeah, that's another.
So I'm, I'm still moved. I'm at two weeks.
Okay, so the second, all in favor? So it would be to tell you. Who seconded, I'm sorry?
I did.
And I mean, of course, again, it goes without saying, emergencies come up, stuff happens.
Renee was asked to do a letter of support, was that true? Was that the one you told me about? This is a new one?
She sent the letter. We just have to sign it.
I just read it. It was very, well.
We not already done, this is, oh, sorry, what?
No, I'm saying, we had, we had a, is there another letter of support you sent out that we did last night? Or did you say that already?
That was the LCOs.
Should we tell them?
You did it last week.
That's the one. Or did you put it the right way that it was coming out? Oh, perfect, she reworded it. So it's that the hundred dollars would come out of the reimbursement instead. So do we have a motion to sign this?
Yeah, I would move that we sign this.
That this is a hundred dollars to open up the Waste Water Treatment Plant.
I will second that.
Yes.
All in favor?
With the hundred dollars from the reimbursement?
Nope.
She, she put it there.
The remaining $3,032, I think, is going to the general fund specifically tagged to the Waste Water Treatment Grant expense account.
So I guess one of my names.
Oh, I signed where Dan is supposed to sign. Shoot. I'm sorry.
All right, I'll sign where you.
We're just having a wonderful day on a single form. So I'm going to read this fisherman's letter. Hello, my name is Kathryn Chipman. We are a fishing family of commercial lobstermen and we have a strong connection with the livelihood and sustainability of the industry. The purpose of this letter is to request your support of the lobstermen in our state. As you are already aware, the fishing industry currently faces battles from the right whale issue and the proposed wind turbine project off Molligan. It is my hope you will read, sign, and send an enclosed letter to our main delegation in hopes that they will unite and support the fishing industry. I have enclosed addresses, please, but please do not stop there, send to anyone who you feel can add power to strength to the argument of the main fishermen. Our livelihoods are on the line. Support the main fishermen, they support you. So this is the letter now.
Yes.
That was her asking us to sign the letter.
And that's where you signed it.
Well, don't we want to read the letter?
Oh, I thought you just did.
No, that was her asking us to send the letter. We haven't even read the letter, we got to come and either read the letter.
All right.
The purpose of this letter is to request your support of the lobster fishing industry in our state. As you are already aware, the fishing industry currently faces battles from the right whale issue and the proposed wind turbine project off Molligan. Should rulings on either of these fronts not support the fishermen, the consequences could prove devastating to all of our coastal communities, communities in Maine. Lubeck has a population of 1,233. Okay, I think one of that.
Yeah.
Twenty-eight of these are licensed commercial lobstermen. Vessels have a captain with one, two, sometimes three sternmen who rely on their captain for their livelihoods. Plus, these sternmen have people who are dependent on them for their well-being. One vessel can directly impact a dozen other people financially. These people support local businesses in their communities. They buy from grocery stores, gas stations, restaurants, auto and marine businesses, hardware stores, pharmacies, and auto dealerships, and insurance agents too. They pay property taxes to support their municipalities and school districts, as well as local infrastructures, including fire and police departments and roads. They volunteer to coach sports teams. They support their local towns in a myriad of ways. The economy in coastal communities is driven by local fishermen. They are crucial to the economic viability of towns and islands in the state of Maine. New England fishermen are the greatest ambassadors of the ocean. It's our livelihood, our communities, our backyard, our financial security, and our heritage. We urge the right solution to support the industry and not hurt fishermen in the process. So that's what we're signing. I think it was important that we actually read what we were saying.
I will make a motion to sign the letter.
I'll second that. Am I allowed to second that too? All in favor?
Could I have a little, little devil's advocate thing here? I have no problem signing this, I agree with him. However, I would feel more positively inclined, Dorded, if we did not have to see a myriad of detritus along the shoreline that comes off the lobster boats, that, you know, like bleach bottles and that kind of thing. They also have a responsibility. Having said that, of course, I'll sign this.
Okay, so I think we're seconded. All in favor?
Well, you're signing that, I'll just announce that nomination papers are going to be available April 23rd.
Could I also talk about this Will Tool thing?
We have not gotten to, um.
April.
Oh, actually, you don't want.
April 23rd, she's giving me the letter here. And we're signing it on my card.
Well, that's fine. Does it matter?
No, I'll just.
And it's not this thing here?
No.
These two?
Right.
Okay, so it doesn't matter if it's taken off my card? So I don't have my agenda next month? Why did you?
So yes, nomination papers will be available April 23rd and they have to be returned by four o'clock June 4th. And the positions are for.
Want to read it?
Okay. Oh, okay. Two positions for selectmen, assessors, overseers of the corps, two positions for the MSAD 19, RSU 85 Board of Directors, one position for the Lubeck Water District, and one position for the Budget Committee.
So, the only other thing on the menu, actually, the agenda, is the, we have to sign the claim deed because we're not sure when the, the closing will be before April 30th. So you want us to sign that, right?
Well, that's, this is another deed, actually. This is for, I think, Suzette, I'm going to, um, there was a request for a release on something that potentially was going to be foreclosed on while we were in COVID. The payment came in after, by mail, but was postmarked by the date of the foreclosure.
So it ended up.
The foreclosure was averted, but the payment came in on the two days after. So they need to have this signed to clear all that out.
So that's.
So I, I know which one that was.
All right.
That folder by my monitor, please.
Sign the closing deed.
Sign this to Claire.
I didn't know you signed one.
Do I have a second, a second on?
I'll second.
All in favor, motion, Rachel?
Yes.
Sign the release deed.
So it's the 14th, we're going to, 14, yeah. It's a deed releasing a lien, you're down at the bottom. Thank you, Carol, for that, this time.
What she said.
Is there just the one for the Select Board? The rest of it's yours, isn't it?
There's two copies, one for him and one for us.
Okay. So as far as the medical property, we can go ahead and sign the deed, of course, they won't get it until, it won't be effective until we hand it to him and he brings the rest of the money, but I thought we're all here, so we'll do that. And we also have to make a motion to allow Renee to sign the other two paper documents and closing, which is for the transfer tax and.
The tank removal.
The tank removal. So there's two documents that she can sign and close because the buyer also has to sign those. So this is, I'll need a motion that we sign the claim deed over.
I move that we sign it quickly.
Over to Derek.
Over to Derek Lyons.
And it will be obviously effective when he brings the money in, but we're not sure what the, it's going to be by the end of the month though.
And then did you say we need a motion for Renee to sign?
Yes, and so who seconded it? All in favor? So then we also need a motion.
And then a motion for Renee to sign.
When he signs the closing document, when he comes in with a check.
Is that a motion then? Yeah. I'll second.
All in favor? So there's two copies of, of this, of the claim deed. There's no name under this one.
Oh, good, oh, good, a generic selected. That's what I like. This is, this is the only, oh, there's another place.
No, that's, that's the, there's another, there's another copy of the deed.
There you go.
Someone, do you have a signed letter that has my agenda on it? Did you return any of the signature things? Get, oh, Dan, do you have any signature papers over there?
Yeah.
I may have some of them, I'm, I'm missing my agenda.
I circulate.
That's on the, on that top one there.
I didn't have the two of them.
Oh.
Take that off. Take my letter. I don't think we have anything else, uh, many updates, I think.
No, no, I, I, something in other business I needed to talk about this Will Tool thing.
See, I should call and ask you if we can talk about that.
Did you get that receipt for the other property there, that email?
Yes, they signed it.
Okay, I wasn't sure, like, I wasn't sure if you were talking about that or not.
Yes, we did, we did both.
Okay.
Yeah, Suzette, see you tomorrow. Okay, you're on, Will Tool.
Okay, yeah, I just got a call this afternoon from Todd Martin, who works with Will Tool. And actually, Denise and I were on this Zoom call with Will Tool about several items that were important to us, one being this recycle bill that's going through the legislation. What Todd asked me was that initially, he wanted to know if I would call Will Tool, ask him to co-sponsor it, but then in the conversation, he said, Will has already said no, he would not co-sponsor it. He makes a policy not to do that if he's going to vote on it. So he asked if we as a Select Board would conjure up a letter, would create a letter urging him to support this recycle bill that's going through legislation. To Will, to Will Tool.
Well, I want to know a little more about the bill.
We talked about it the last time.
What does the bill say?
We talked about it the last time.
Well, I don't, okay.
It, it, the recycle as is taking, the issue with recycling is draining the, of every town up there. And this bill would give a help out to each town to give them a little reimbursement for their efforts to be recycling. So what's the cost of the bill? I, I don't know that.
Well, they want the producers to be more responsible for the packaging that they use. So this program is being used in Canada in certain places. So if, if the state can pass this bill, it's automatically going to require that the producers become more responsible for whatever they package their product in. So whether it's making the product, the packaging more recyclable, or providing a way to recycle that product.
So like, stop using peanuts?
Stop using peanuts, stop using all this.
Does it have a number, LD something?
It has, I'm not sure, yeah. But I can give you a link for it.
Did I give you the sheet of that?
You did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I knew I couldn't find it today.
I, I just did, I listened to another Zoom just earlier this week, and it still is in revision, so they haven't assigned a number to it yet. They expect it soon, but, and we actually, you actually signed a letter of support last year, but then COVID shut it down in the legislature and it, it just went away. They re brought it up again, made some revisions, and now it's back in.
Well, certainly, Lubeck should be a forerunner, especially with Apple here, that we should be part of recycling. Whether we should encourage Will to do something that is against his principles of supporting a bill that he has to vote on, I don't, I don't suggest we, I suggest we send the letter as Select Board encouraging the bill, but not if Dr. Will's saying, look, we want you to do this even though you don't believe in doing that, and I, I don't agree with that.
I, I couldn't, I didn't justify what he said. It seemed a bit odd to me. And it seemed in contradiction with stuff he's done before.
Well, the thing is, I mean, how we can get to offset the cost.
Of the recycling.
To the taxpayers?
Yes.
The recycling?
Yes.
We should go for it.
Yes.
I, I'd like to read the.
I would too.
So is there something that you need before you even get to a number? Thinking of what, you know, who gets out of revision?
Oh, I think they're going to have to go through their whole legislative procedure of voting on it and getting it out of committee and.
But what about Mary Ann Moore?
Uh, well, she, my impression was she was a little more supportive.
Yes.
Um, yeah, yeah.
Maybe we'll get to her and see if she wants to help. But like, it's hard to be behind something that you're not sure what's in yet. But I mean, even, even the draft would be nice to read.
Is there time for them to review something before they?
Yeah, I can't just.
Vote to do a letter of support and they, is it next letment meeting? Not time?
I think, what you have, but for me, has the gist of the bill, I mean, ask.
Yeah.
Items of what it's going to say.
I can send a scanned copy of that, but I'll also send you the link to the organization that's behind, that's actually pushing the bill through.
Who is that?
Oh, National Resource Council, I think, National Resource Council of Maine, I think that's the correct name. Also Maine Conservation Voters, so let's do it.
Well, it was really sad what happened with COVID because I finally got all my little , including my bag that I had from Apple, Bermuda, which, you know, protecting the environment, my recycling bag, and I'd finally gotten used to going into the store with the bags and within about three weeks, I was into doing my, I am so good, I'm not using plastic bags anymore. You cannot put your stuff in that bag. I'm like, oh my golly, that's such a setback.
That was the thing they outlawed, yeah.
Yeah, that was not good. So, sure, table at Lubeck. Well, I think what we can do is look at the links, read it, and then we can come up with a nice letter and sign it for the next meeting and have a letter ready. If that's going to be.
I'd like to have a coffee.
That work, Rachel?
We'll send you a link.
Hey, that's perfect.
And then you can link on what Denise's, maybe you can send the whole thing to Renee and she'll send it out to us as a group.
That'd be, that'd be the way to do it.
Yeah, she'll send the whole Select Board the link and we all have a chance to review what it is and get behind it. And I'll, and I'll call Mary Ann and ask her myself if she wants to help us because if Will doesn't, I mean, I'm not going to ask him if he's already said no, I'll go to Mary Ann, I know her as well.
Well, and she is, I would think much more positive.
Yeah, so we'll just see if we can get her to do a letter. She, Julie and I got about 30 letters, but we got a lot of letters. We haven't done letters lately, but let's help you with your, your mission, but especially with the recycling. I really would love Lubeck to be. No, for some recycling, that'd be great, you know, we're sure most point and we're not making a big mess and, you know, we're trying to recycle.
I think we have to get off and on.
I can tell you, from a guy that might know something about it, we are, we have less people than.
Fewer.
Right?
Fewer people.
Grandma, grandma.
Yes. You weren't a teacher, were you? Anyway, we have fewer people. Eastport has fewer people and constantly, this town is way under. Our weight, on our weights for the disposal of trash. We are always.
Recycling.
We are, we're about 40,000 pounds a month, 60,000 pounds a month up in Eastport consistently.
And you would tweet me that to the fact that we're like being, we're the recycling. And you attribute that to the fact that we're like being, recycling?
It has to miss something.
And do you know the other thing about Eastport?
They recycle too, though.
Getting in my head is that our population is greater than Eastport.
Yes.
And yet, we're the town, and they're the city, so.
They're all.
They incorporate different.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it could be, at one time, they were different.
I mean, it's consistent, and I've watched it for three years.
Oh, right, common. Wanda.
I just wanted to, um, at our last school board meeting, I, you know, I brought up Mr. Johnson, also, how you said, Carol, and you would like, you know, that we have some communication, and John reiterated to some of the information. So I hope that we are having that communication between the school board and the town board. And I know, I don't know if you guys are aware, uh, but last week, at our meeting, Lubec has received another COVID, which was six hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars for our school.
Wow.
And we already received two, I, I think we're almost up to nine hundred thousand that we've received.
And it's supposed to be spent on what?
Well, this, the latest one will be twenty-five percent for education purposes, and I'm not sure, Carol, they sent, I requested the report, and it's two hundred and forty-two pages, but anyway, you, I just want, uh, most of all, this solar thing, I, I hope that, you know, as a citizen, too, that we work together, uh, for that solution.
Right, to the solar panels on the school, and also help the school and the municipality.
Yeah.
Well, that's wonderful.
I, I agree with you, Wanda, we, we have to, uh, look hard into solar issues, and we, we have to do it.
So, Wanda? Do we wanna set the next meeting up jointly with?
Well, no, I mean, that's not, that's, I'm, I'm just, if, if I wanted Carol to know that I didn't bring it up, and John backed it up.
Think this is in the holiday schools, just to tell them, you know?
But the next, uh, we are having our first boiler, well, at the beginning, uh, with the, you know, the people that we selected. And so we're gonna be working on the boiler project, but anyway, I just hope it is fixed, and I hope that we do this together.
That meeting is April 27th, right, the boiler meeting?
Yeah, twenty-seventh, or the twenty-fourth? Twenty-fourth, I'm sorry.
Okay, twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
Is that gonna be up here?
The school?
School president?
No.
A cafeteria, okay.
Yeah, we're gonna have it down there. Some of the board members feel that we had a lot of people come, we don't have the room here, but we're hoping to get televised down there in the cafeteria.
Is it a Saturday?
No, it's on a Tuesday.
April the twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
Like, it's the twenty-seventh?
I think it's the twenty-fourth, okay. It's the twenty-fourth, cause I'll be out of town.
April twenty-fourth is a Saturday.
This is Saturday.
Oh, no, I apologize, it's the twenty-seventh.
Okay, that's a Tuesday.
Yeah, that is a Tuesday.
At what time, Wanda?
It's at six o'clock at the cafeteria, yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion that Tuesday is the twenty-seventh.
I'll second that.
So, move.
But anyway.
So I just wanted to go, thank you very much, Wanda, I'm sure we'll all try to make it.
Yeah.
Committee updates, we've started the committees again, the first Monday of the month is shellfish. Now, uh, this particular month, um, the harbor board and the safe harbor is gonna be on Wednesday, because Monday is Patriot Day. So it will be on the twenty-first of April, that we'll have safe harbor update at five, and at six o'clock, we'll have the harbor board. I would just like to say, I'm just thinking about what you just said, you've all tried to make it, I think only two of you could go, because otherwise you'd have a quorum. Well, when we have, uh, mutual budget meetings, we all, we're all there, as long as it's open to the, as long as it's open to the public. Can you check on that?
Yeah.
Because can the school board, the select board?
Yeah, I think you're right, because the budget meeting is advertised as a workshop.
Right.
Right.
Okay. So, who are the attendees?
No, this is a workshop.
No, this is, this is, this is a, a select board meeting now.
Right now.
Or what happened earlier?
The boiler.
The boiler is, is a?
A workshop.
It's a workshop, yeah.
So, so we can't, only two of us can go, that we shouldn't?
No, no, you can't vote.
Yeah, we're not voting.
You can, you can have a forum there, but you're not qualified to vote.
Why?
Because it's a workshop.
We can't sit all together and mumble.
Right.
Yeah.
Just wanted to be clear, there will be seats between us.
And we might even be able to arrange our television coverage to make sure you don't.
All right, then. So, are, the ROLF? I haven't really zoomed.
ROLF has, I know a couple of applications out, we're been on a bin meet, and we're also waiting on some informational responses. So we don't have definitive date, we're all on standby.
Do you have a Marion transfer station meeting?
Not this month, we, uh, we decided to leave an extra month in between, because there wasn't much going on.
Okay. And what about, um, recycling?
Recycling, the last meeting was, about a month ago?
Was it that long?
Yeah.
We just, we had one, I'm still working on the move.
You're, you're meeting every other month, is that it?
Yes.
That's good.
Well, we're gonna go into budget phase of the week.
Right, we're gonna be busy. Well, the budget, and the budget meetings are up, up, yeah, at five o'clock, an hour before the select board meetings, which are now six o'clock, as we've, uh, gone into spring, and hopefully, we won't have any snow on Saturday, the birds won't have this much.
Um, you know, further to the recycle meeting, we spoke peripherally about the end of the year and the trash pickup, which we've done historically down at the school. And Deb and Denise are going to work with them, uh, down at the school to organize that.
April twenty-second, Earth Day?
Definitely is.
So I've already been out cleaning.
One thing that I neglected to say, when you gave me the floor, was that Apple would very much like to know how we can support the cleanup operation.
Oh, well, Earth Day, I think we should all get out.
Yes.
We're gonna take the publicity.
Publicity, wise, put it on, the, the Apple, or maybe you could, uh, donate the trash bags, or, I don't know, something, so that, just, or just publicity to get everybody, I think I read somewhere that everybody wants people to just go out to wherever you want and pick up trash on the twenty-second. People have asked me where they could bring it, and I told them at the roadside to bring it to the town. I picked up two hundred bottles.
What we had done before is, with Jace's help, we would, uh, the school would get in the bus, they would, we'd sort of divide it up into quadrants. And the kids would pick up along the sides, they would have those orange vests, they'd have rubber gloves.
Yeah.
The teachers would be with them, they'd pick it up, they'd end up down at the school, and we'd give them a hot-budge sundae or something like that. But it was very close to the end of the, uh, school year.
They can use any dumpster that my wife has around town, and I usually leave one down in the old town drawers.
Oh, okay, old town drawers.
And wherever you need an extra one, I'm sure Susan is all on board with it.
So, which could, in the twenty-second, is, is that a Saturday?
The twenty-second of April, well, our recycle meeting was on the twenty-sixth of March, and the twenty-second of April is Thursday.
So that's Earth Day?
That's Earth Day.
That's the day that we should?
Yeah, and we could just make that ad hoc, there's enough trash, we'll still be picking it up at the end of May.
Yes.
It's, we really have.
There is a lot of trash.
And I, you, I, I always go on and on about people throwing trash, but, you know, we get these windstorms in this town. And I've seen trash flying around out of, it just, it just does.
You know, though, to put a positive spin on this, years ago, when I first took over, you know, so, we always donate to the straight bay cleanup. And, uh, we used to haul two, three, six-yard dumpsters out of there. And the last three years, I'm happy to say, it's been about a half a dumpster.
Wow.
So it's really, really?
Raising the consciousness.
Been a good thing. I mean, we've gone from, from twelve to eighteen yards to, to three or four, and the road is cleaner, it's a heck of a cleaner.
And they say it throughout the whole country, that there's much more trash on the road than there used to be before, I heard.
And, I mean, the thing is, we, we, we donate to all the cleanups that I've seen in the last three years, a whole lot last.
So do you wanna make a motion right now for the cleanup day, the official cleanup cleanup day?
So when are we gonna do this?
Um, well, we need to coordinate with the school on that, but we could just say that?
Could be that weekend.
The town of Lubec, starting April twenty-second, is?
Through that Sunday, I would say.
Through Sunday.
Twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth.
Clean up in front of your home, or wherever you, I don't know.
That would be great.
But, uh, they can use any of the no-stove dumpsters, put the bags in.
And wherever you folks need them, I'll put them.
That's all yours, that's all your laundry, if we were doing a cleanup on the road.
We usually help them all out.
Jason, when you say, E, if I was renting one, and all of a sudden people started putting trash on it?
I will clear it with all of them, there's, there's no problem. I talked to Brandon, Brandon is totally on board with it, uh, the school, school on board with it, so.
So it's, go until Sunday, and then, then, then?
I mean, I dump them, but, like, at the end of the day, I'll go dump them, so it's, it's nothing to the businesses.
Okay, so, so if I have one that I'm renting from you, and all of a sudden it's got a bunch of stuff that I didn't put in?
I would come see you first, and ask you. But, but what I do is say if it's on a, on a Monday or Tuesday or whatever, I come in and I dump them every day to clean up, just so a business doesn't suffer from, and all the businesses.
So are you okay with that, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then Monday it's over?
And I, I will tell you, all the businesses in this town are totally, totally on board with cleanups, so there's never been any still.
I'm good with it.
Yeah.
I'm on it.
Put some posters up.
That would be great, if you could put posters. White city, Facebook.
Yeah, Thursday through Sunday.
And the kids have a great time going.
Well, Thursday, the fourth, second, they go.
Now, wait, that's, the school's on vacation that week, do you want the school to go?
Well, we can do something with the kids at the, you know, just before they leave, and then they, it's warmer.
Yeah, it's warmer, it's easier to go out, yeah.
Do the kids later, when they wonder what they need, and it's pretty, yeah, they can clean, like, Stock Creek Park or something. Something safe.
Towards the end of the year, their ants need to get out, it's fine.
I've seen, I've seen a couple of my neighbors, Paul Meyer and his wife, they've been all over town cleaning up, and they've been doing.
Yeah, I see a lot of people out individually with a big bag, and they're throwing stuff in there.
But one eighty-nine is really kind of a mess.
It is.
We used to get the prisoners, I mean, this is where we're missing the prisoners, and that fucks up, you bet.
And I'm sure there's a lot of real estate signs that all us Realtors have seen blow out. And I can't find them, I have no idea where they're gone, so.
You know, it's, it's, it's a reward.
That's a good idea.
Well, um, I would, I would nominate that we close.
If we still have a comment, Tom?
Do we, do we, do we need a motion that we were gonna make, if Lubec Earth Recycling, I mean, Clean Up Day?
Well, I'd like to have a kitchen.
It's gonna be the town of Lubec, cleanup weekend or whatever, the twenty, starting Earth Day, the twenty-second to the twenty-fifth.
That's their vacation, right?
So they'll do something.
So they'll be with their home, yeah.
So I need a second.
Second.
All in favor of Carol, your motion?
And then, and then in May, that's when they'll do the official running around, right, yeah.
Okay, so are we entertaining much to?
I'm, I'm going to make a comment, because I'm usually the one that's complaining, but the, um, I'm real pleased that the road crew has already started, um?
Sweeping.
No, they're grading the dirt roads, and they did a real good job, and they did it without me complaining.
Oh, my goodness.
I just want that to go on.
And a shout out to Public Works, excellent, thank you.
And Travis too, it's good.
Really appreciate that.
You commented that last year, too. And are we not all happy that that road to Machias is getting fixed?
Oh, my goodness, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, there's quite a few yards being destroyed, but it's, it's gonna look good.
Well, it, it looks like they, they could probably take the houses on a lot of those streets.
They have an end date on that.
I imagine it's probably by the end of the summer, it better be done, I imagine three months probably.
Oh, yeah, I think by the beginning of the summer, it should be pretty, yeah.
It's about Sargent's doing it, so who knows? I mean, Sargent's is, is really, really good.
And, and they are simultaneously doing all this paintwork.
Well, uh, you said, I didn't, all I said was, yes, the chicken's in the oven, I'll make a, I'm already doing, I'm already doing a jury.
Raise the motion.
Second, all in favor?
No, there's about, there's, Harold.
Yes.
Well, that is about two weeks around. There's, there's so many.
Renee's.
That could be, I just wanted to add new shade.
The bishop in this room.
Yeah. That's in the municipal budget now.
Good. We've been cooking and for, and a roll.
I complain all the time, because I really do feel that there's such a storm in here.
Yep, the, the, how all my names.
Thanks, Kevin, apparently the TV is rocking.
Okay.
Yeah, I got a comment on there, it's almost like they, they couldn't hear the sound, I was like, I'm ready, someone. Yeah, but it's so.